Good evening. Are we up and rolling? All right, thank you for being here this evening. I wanted to first excuse Dr. Dent for not being here this evening, but to thank Dr. Tuamet for filling in that hole. Deputy Superintendent, we're glad you're here. You're usually here, you're just usually here. All right. Do I have a motion to approve that the agenda is written? So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I still moved. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items listed?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. That brings us to comments led tonight by your two members.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Couple of things. Oh. Can you hear? Okay. Couple of things. First thing is wanted to acknowledge all the celebrations, the assemblies, the performances last week throughout our district. It was something that was amazing to see in celebration of Dr. King holiday. And then the second thing is January is School Board Recognition Month. And we are going to start with a little video from Holly Heights. And we'll start with that. It's amazing what they can do these days. It's a Holly Heights studio. But yes, and also at the diocese, you have things from Daffodil recognizing and honoring the board. And on behalf of our school district, we just want to say thank you for your leadership, your integrity, and all the work that you do for this community. So thank you.
Appreciate that. And that video is adorable. Anytime we get to see a little basis of these meetings, it's a good meeting. All right. Word member comments? Paul, do you want to pick this up?
Sure. I had the privilege really to go to this this last couple of weeks. I wasn't able to attend the Sumner High School career night, but I did go to the Bonnie Lake career night. And I was surprised. I mean, it was full. But they're pretty much right at 6:30 and it was pretty packed. All the students were out with their clothes. And there was also, I was really intrigued. They had the junior RMC there. And so I stopped by and I said, oh, is this a club? And they said, no, this is a class. I said, well, I thought the class wasn't going to be maybe till next year. They said, well, it isn't. We're from Bethel. So students from Bethel came over to help kick that off and recruit. I was, I was just impressed. But I was also, as I made my rounds, went through the culinary arcs. That's always a busy one. There's a line in there for food and for students and parents to ask lots of questions. Anyway, I had a good time. I closed it out, saw lots of people. So if you missed it, I hope you can make it next year. The Safety Committee, that was, we, there's broken up into several subgroups. This was a subgroup on physical and emotional safety or mental safety. They're finishing up their, they're basically coalescing all the ideas down to three items that they can bring forward to the, I think, to the larger safety group. It still might get smaller at that point, but it was, it was engaging, the discussion. It's amazing how much stuff overlaps and how much actually as they looked at items and said, well, this overlaps with this, it kind of got creative and combined some stuff together. It was, I thought, very fruitful. And I'm looking forward to seeing the culmination of that work of some ideas. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
I don't have anything specific really to say, but I think when we had our December board meeting, we were all hoping that the staff had a good opportunity to relax and recharge. And from what I can tell, we certainly have done it. So welcome back to staff. Guys are great.
I just wanted to comment on my daughter who attends Sumner High School. Came home from school on Tuesday after her MLK Assembly at her school, just raving about the production that was put on with that assembly and the message and what they had to say. And she definitely wanted to give props out to Mr. Vincent, who was the one who put that on and did a really great job, including making sure to include the students' voices in that assembly. And then I also wanted to say that it was really fun to see everybody that was attending the curriculum nights. I know for parents that are transitioning for the first time from middle school to high school, that's always, you know, exciting and nervous time on what that's going to be like. And so I'm glad we have those curriculum nights for parents to get their questions answered and kids to get to see everything that's going on. So.
Lots of good stuff. Thank you, Kevin. Lots of good things happening right now in our district. All right. That brings us next to audience comments.
Good evening. The board recognizes the value of public comment on education issues and the importance of involving members of the public in its meetings. Comments from the public are taken under board advisement, may or may not receive action at future meetings. Topics including charges or complaints against employees, employment or essential personnel, acquisition of real estate, lawyer-client relationships, campaigning, and parameters for negotiations should not be discussed in your audience's comments. Other information, questions, or problems can usually be addressed by district staff. The audience comment period will end when all registered speakers have been heard. We ask that everyone adhere and follow these and understand and follow these guidelines. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or any other form of support or non-support to be used. The board will not respond to comments, but will take them under advisement. Speakers should be courteous, professional, and refrain from using profanity, vulgar language, threatening, or defamatory comments. As a reminder, individuals are not permitted to name a specific staff member, board member, or student during public comments. Failure to do so may result in the board president or designated interrupting or ending the comment. The audience comment process is as follows. Only speakers who were registered by noon Tuesday, January 17th will be heard. When your name is called, please come up to the podium, state your name, address comments to the board as a whole. You will have three minutes to speak, and I will signal you when there is one minute remaining. Our first audience comment is Isaac Kim.
So I'd like to just start off by thanking the board for giving me, giving me the opportunity to speak here as a student that goes to Sumner High School and has been in the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District all my life. I went to Maple Lawn, Sumner Middle, Sumner High. You know, it means a lot to me that I'm given the opportunity to come and address my concerns about the way the school's going and my, my community in general. And I know it's a school board appreciation month. So I would like to start off by saying that all my time at Sumner and this district in general has generally been positive. But I've been noticing specifically in high school that there's a growing, you know, distance between student and administration. And there has been less of a connection between the two. I think this has resulted in a lot of students not feeling comfortable coming out and talking about issues related to drugs, issues related to staff members, and issue related to just generally their concerns about their futures and things like that. So for example, you know, earlier in the year, I noticed more and more that, and I have friends that have drug problems or getting through it, right? And I've been connected to these and this, and this, these issues quite a bit. And they feel like the school is working against them. I think that's a real shame. And I think that that's something that we need to work towards correcting. Because, I mean, I, I think that it should be a working together, not working apart. And so when my friends say to me, like, I just feel like the issue is just going to make the situation worse. I don't feel comfortable. I don't feel secure telling the school about my issues. I think that's a huge issue. And it was perhaps a year ago. I don't remember exactly, but there was an incident where, I'm not going to mention the specifics, but students had to come forward and talk to police and things like that about a coach. And I feel like that could have been avoided earlier if the students felt more comfortable in their, in their situation. And so talking to the school. So I just came here to address that. And I think it's something to keep in mind when, you know, administrating the school and moving forward is to make sure the students feel comfortable coming out and talking to the school and working with the school and make it so they don't feel like they're getting persecuted or they're getting attacked. Because I, I mean, I, I know that the school just tries its best to generally help the students and things like that. But I feel like sometimes that's not really that well understood by a lot of my peers. So that's generally just the main topic I wanted to address, but also that the MLK Assembly was.
Thank you. That ends audience comments.
Thank you, Isaac, for your comments. Moving on to policy matters. In accordance with policy 1310, the following policies and bylaws are included for the second reading and for adoption. Because it's second reading, we know they, this might be embedded. We've had time to review those, so those are listed there in our packet. Do I have a motion to adopt those district policies listed?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Any discussion?
Great work on the policy committee and appreciate all the work.
Agreed. I was going to mention that as well, that there's a team of people that work on these before they even come to us for first reading. And Paul and Rick, I know you're part of that process. So thank you for investing so much time, along with many of these sitting out there as well. So, thank you. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Business matters, for information only, there's a budget status report for November 30th, 2022. It's included for board information. Regarding Resolution 922-23, the Crestwood Elementary Lower Field Restoration, the district administration recommends the board adopt the resolution as a final acceptance. Do I have a motion to approve? A second?
Second.
Any discussion? We're really glad it's a final acceptance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. And this brings us to other business. First up is a presentation tonight from Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Tuamet.
Thank you. So this is going to be a brief overview on capital facility advisory. So we know that with the launch of our strategic plan, you know, we want to know guys who support all of our students and obviously making sure that they're future ready. Here's our promise. It's there in red. You know, helping students, you want to graduate, and then also ready to pursue a promising future. So the purpose is to formally request that the board commit to our promise and approve the formation of this district-wide advisory committee, obviously focused on issues related to long-range capital facility planning and funding measures. So the Advisory Committee and Task Force falls under Policy Procedures 4110. And you can see there that it, you know, under that policy is formed to address and clearly define the topic, you know, submit recommendations to superintendents. Members serve voluntarily in advisory capacity. Also, the committee makes up periodic updates to the board. And then the final decision obviously remains with the school board. And just a little review, back in October, the board approved the capital facility plan from 2021 to 2027. Also retained services for Macalias for future site planning and additional research. Also allowed administrations to organize, you know, the capital facility advisory committee to study the capital facility plan, review needs, review data, and then obviously eventually a recommendation for the board. With this, the reason why it's coming up again was this is, you know, a year ago, there's been a lot of pre-planning, pre-research. And this is just a slide that kind of identifies our future growth with our, our school district. So we are growing rapidly. And with that obviously comes capacity issues with students in our schools. So here's just some, some bullets in regards to the needs due to the enrollment and the growth. And you can see there, you know, capacity at Bonnie Lake High School, looking at, you know, in addition to, to that facility, expanding with possible sites for elementary as well as looking at a middle school. You can see the phase two building on to obviously phase two for Sumner High School Master Plan. We're looking at turf fields across the district, up on the hill as well as the valley and all of our sites to be able to stabilize the, the field use and the availability, availability to community and our students. And then also Eli Hill is growing rapidly as well. And then considering an expansion to, to the Eli Hill facility. So with all that said, the advisory committee consists of about 30 volunteers. And obviously, we want stakeholders from all the municipalities, city of Bonnie Lake, city of Sumner, Edgewood, Pierce County. We also want to make sure that, you know, we can have recommendations for student voice to making sure that a student can be appointed at one of the high schools. The other remaining members are application process, and the board should have the application, their diocese, to kind of look that over as well. And then the remaining qualifications you can see are individuals that come from experiences with planning, budgeting, cost estimating, you know, managers, architects, attorneys, parents, and then obviously appropriate community. So this is an ask to just formally accept and the recommendation to approve the formation of the district-wide advisory committee so that we can start and look at the long-range capital facility planning and funding. With that, any questions?
I would, I would just say this is, this is great. And I think our district does its best work when we include members of the community. Of course, when we include student voice and then experts in a lot of these different areas. So I'm happy to have this before the board assignment that has worked well in the past and I know will continue.
I was just going to say that both Rick and I participated or at least observed these communities. And you know, I've been in the district long enough, really long enough, that I would say this, one of those perfect committees where it wasn't just the same people from the community, they were very diverse. Their, just their knowledge of engineering and building and experience was just something to be really proud of. And I think, I think that if we continue along that path and that was kind of all the people involved, but also there were parents, and I mean, it was just a goodness. So I really appreciate that.
Yeah, I think she said it well. The one good thing on there, I'll let him say, Matt, Captain Us's last stand. Is he going to have this moment with us? Matt Gilianus is his name?
Jack Delany.
Yeah. Yeah, it's awesome.
I'm also supportive of going this route, being very deliberate, getting a third party in to help organize the work. Reminds me a lot of basically the, what they did for the Sumner when it kind of went sideways. And I think that's the model we should continue going forward with. There's a much better approach than anything done in the past. So I'm glad he's going to continue. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. So next on the agenda is the recommendation that the board approve the formation of the district facilities advisory committee under district policy 4110. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Also, any discussion? Other than we agree it's a good approach. These schools are going to be around a lot longer than we are, maybe. So it's important to have the best minds from lots of different backgrounds in the planning of it. So thanks for that leadership. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Next recommendation is that the administration recommends the board adopt Resolution Number 102223 for planning in January 2023, a Sumner Bonnie Lake School District full child of her month. Do I have a motion to approve this proclamation?
Salute.
I guess adopt the resolution. Yeah. So thank you. A second? Thank you. Any discussion? Paul?
Well, since this is the first time I will bring this up, I'm going to be abstaining from this vote or voting presence. I'm not exactly sure how that gets reported, maybe somebody can. But I don't usually abstain. I think our duty is to vote on things that come before the board. But on this particular issue, this is a proclamation. I've read you the proclamation. I actually like this proclamation. So someone might say, well, why are you not going to vote on it? And it has to do with the fact I don't think that school boards should be doing proclamations. I think it could lead us into a weedy water. You know, this group saying, oh, what about a proclamation for this? What about a proclamation for that? I just, I don't necessarily believe that these always result in the outcomes we want. And so for that matter, this is not binding. This really doesn't do anything except really say what great work we are already doing in the district. So that's where I'm at. So for those people doing the work, please keep doing it. I'm supportive, I love it. I'm just not supportive of proclamations. Thank you.
Any other discussion? It's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes 40. Director Williams abstaining. Okay. And next on the agenda, up for action of the instructional materials adoption. These resources have been reviewed and approved by the district curriculum and instructional materials committee. This information was previously provided for first reading in the December 14th, 2022 board meeting and is now being presented to the board for second reading. The district recommends the board adopt the following instructional materials for 11th grade US history. And the material selected is United States history, modern times. There's other information there you can read regarding author publisher copy, right? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Sorry, slow to the punch there. You know, I looked at this a lot. I'm glad I was able to sit at home and view it online. As I mentioned before the break, I looked at it for 10 hours. After the break, I looked at about two and a half hours on the teacher's side. I did have a couple of questions that I put forth in an email to the superintendent who did respond back to me. And that response was basically, yeah, this is a static text. It's not going to be changing. This is, this is static for the time we're going to have. The other thing was I questioned whether or not there was additional supplemental material. I wasn't being able to see. And the response back was, no, you're seeing the entirety of the curriculum before you. So I feel pretty comfortable about this. Again, when you're looking at history, it's always open to interpretation. Nobody's ever going to like every little thing there. But I thought it was really good. And I'm, I'm happy to support this adoption. Thank you.
I know there was a lot of work that went into this, a lot of thought and a lot of different minds and experts on it, much by Kelly Dunn and her team. And so we thank you for being so thorough in that. And Paul, thank you for taking the extra deep dive as well. Did I miss something?
Steve back there.
Steve's back. All right. So the motion has been, yes, so sorry.
I would just, I would want to add to that and say thank you to the community members and the students who are involved. We had a lot of volunteers step forward out of community that had various backgrounds, various degrees and knowledge of this subject. And then just having the students have a chance to look through the book, look through the curriculum, see the online component to how technical it's going to be for them. They can go on their Chromebooks and take notes inside and highlight and mouse over a word and get a definition or change the whole text into another language and hop out into different things that you can't necessarily get out of a static book. So I really appreciate the online component and the fact that they can access it through their Chromebooks, which thankfully to our technicality, all of our students have at the high school level. So just thank you to the community for being involved.
Anybody else have further discussion? All right. The motion has been seconded for recommendation and discussed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up for recommendation, the administration recommends the board adopt the following instructional materials for fifth grade human growth and development titled HIV and Me, Marissa's Story, and Always Changing and Growing Up. Do I have a motion to approve these two instruction materials?
So moved.
A second?
Certain.
Any discussion? All those.
I was going to make some comments last time. I, you know, for some touchy topics. I thought these were done really well. And so I think Steve worked on that conspiracy. Darling, I'm honored. Thank you very much. Yeah, I, you know. So, yeah. Back to you, Eric. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right. Motion's been seconded. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right. Next up are a couple of presentations. Picking us up is Marina Tane, our capital projects and facilities manager. Thank you.
Thank you, board, and Dr. Amet, for the opportunity to come and talk to you about some capital projects that don't always get the attention. Sumner High and Mountain View have been the big 300-pound gorillas in the district for a while, but there's a lot of other work that we do. So I kind of want to just go over some of that and introduce you to some good things that we're doing. First of all, I wanted to highlight, and this is a totally capital projects per se, but this has been my baby for a little while. And we have had an incredible partnership with PSD. We have a strategic energy management grant with them. And we have had an incredible partnership with PSD. We have a strategic energy management grant with them. We have a number of grants that we're working on with PSD and partnerships that have been very fruitful, like I think both of us. PSD called me last spring and told me about an opportunity to have a climate fellow, which is a recent college graduate. In a related field to sustainability that they would pay seventy-five percent of the cost for. So we did a budget request and were able to bring Madison Sipple on board in August. And Maddie is a very intelligent person who has deep qualifications, she has a master's in sustainable business. And she has dived right into work with us on our energy goals and and work with us on our projects that we have with PSE. Today, we had an energy team meeting, it was very fruitful, and know that the crusty maintenance guys, I love that term. We're always excited about this kind of work, but I think that we've really turned them around and we have a real partnership. And real clear goals and really do some deep dives in buildings, what we can do to do the right thing for them. So I'm really pleased to just tell you about this program that we have that we're working with in the district that we're really proud of. Talked quite a while ago about the SRT funds and a indoor air quality project with renter commissioning. This has been an amazing project. The first round of schools that we did in that first list, two high schools. Lakewood, Mountain View, Bonnie Lake Elementary, Donald Isman, Maple Lawn, to Holly Heights and Victor Falls. All have unique issues that we wanted to address with the recommissioning of those sites to make sure that systems were functioning properly. In that work, we identified a hundred and seventy-seven issues. And then twelve other issues during testing and balancing that we did at the two high schools. We also internally took on twenty-nine work orders, which doesn't sound like a lot to a hundred and seventy-seven, but to a small group, it was a lot. And it helped cement that understanding of the importance of this work. Our HVAC guys were very impressed with the work orders that we created out of the issues that were identified. And also doing work in-house allowed us to save a significant amount of money. And so we were able to then go and add additional buildings, Crestwood, the ELC, Emerald Hills, Liberty Ridge, Sumner Middle. So far, that's still in process. So far, we've identified a hundred and twenty-nine issues at those schools and twenty-four issues during testing and balancing. And, you know, I know people will say, well, there's some pretty new buildings on that list, why would you do that? Because recommissioning a building helps you take care of the things that when you're responding to comfort issues. Or trying to solve a problem, you might not have the time to address. Or they may be hidden issues that aren't obvious to occupant comfort or some of the other signs. I included a couple of little pictures. One is a physical thing where we have moisture getting on a component, so we're going to have to go back in and protect that component. Whether that was missed in building construction or whatever, who knows, but that's why you recommission. The second image is some programming that's really out of out of whack in one of our areas. That's actually at Summer Summer Middle's weight room where they're cycling in the middle of the night between heating and cooling. Nobody's there to notice that those things are happening, so you do this work so that you find those things and you can correct those. So it's an impactful project that improves the performance of our buildings and the quality of air that we've put into our spaces. As a result of this, I said, you know, to the team, can we talk to PSEs? If maybe they'd like it, and they really, really liked it. So we entered into an energy conservation grant agreement with PSE. And you can see that the grants that we are eligible for are significant, and what they'll allow us to do is to do further work. PSE is pretty proud of this work. We've found that very few districts have done much recommissioning. I firmly believe in it, always have. Tomorrow, I'll be presenting to the Northwest Energy Efficiency Council. About K-12 commissioning and recommissioning of buildings. And I will have a PSE engineer and one of our McKinstry engineers with me as well as a commissioning agent. And we'll talk about why we do this and the positive benefit of it, and also the fact that PSE is more than willing to support it with additional funding. So we're pretty excited about that, and today PSE asked us to present about our philosophy in Sumner with this. At their strategic energy management workshop seminar event that they do for all of their commercial customers. So including companies like Boeing and like the city of Bellingham, Fort, you know, and they're different. It's not just schools, it's a lot of different organizations. That's pretty cool.
It's really cool. That we've done that, I I don't remember.
We had a similar program years and years ago. But with our clean buildings performance standards looming, I just really advocated for us to get back into some kind of program. Where we can get help doing the things that we need to do and maybe get some funding to take care of the things that we, you know, want to get down. So, yeah, it's it's been a lot of fun. With the SRF projects or the SRF monies, SRF three gave us additional opportunity. And that first round of projects helped us identify some other work, so that included the work at Daffodil. And we really refined that work to do the right work at the right time with the resources that we have. So we have upgraded the control system for that building. And our new chiller for that building is on order. Really long lead times. I think they're coming from, you know, Lily Petland or something, because it takes a long time to get here. But we're waiting for those. We were able to add some additional scope to replace the pump control panel, the boiler control panel. Take care of some pumps and variable frequency drives, the air dirt separator. And then it became really obvious that we had to do something about the chillers at Bonnie Lake High School, so we added that scope. So, right now, as you say, you know, we've got controls installed and commissioned, waiting for the chiller, which will happen later this year. We've also gone and taken a look at that, those chillers at Bonnie Lake High School. One of them now is fully functional. And it was before the end of the school year last year, so it kind of helped us get into summer. It can't totally handle summer on its own, so we're going to start working on the second chiller. We've identified an underground leak. And so what will happen next is scheduling some, we have some coordination to do, because we have to kind of move the generator aside for a little bit. So we can fix that leak underground, and then we'll get both of those chillers back up and running for that building. Thank thanking you for your forward thinking, and some other projects we set some money aside. One of them was some improvements at Bonnie Lake High School for classrooms. We've already done some of that work. We took those four lecture hall classrooms and approved the acoustics in those rooms. If they're off, you know, located off the commons, you have that tile floor creates a lot of noise, especially during lunchtime. So we had a fun time getting inside the walls and above the lid to see what we could do to really reduce the noise. And so that work has been done to better soundproof those rooms for for learning. Right now, I have the gate hardware and materials on order for the security fence and gate for the music courtyard. You know, kids pass between the arts hallway into the music building, and that's open right there. So we're putting a fence in with a security gate just to further secure that part of the campus. It's a little hidden. So better to have a fence and gate there. And then we are in the process of working on a student store remodel. That store is not very user friendly for the kinds of materials kids are selling in that store today. Very different from the way it was when it was designed. When it was designed, it was t-shirts and, you know, school supplies and things like that. The kids are marketing other things, so we want to be responsive to that. And remodel that store so that they can better manage their inventory and have the space to sell the the things that they want to sell at school. So we'll have to go through health departments of middle and hopefully we'll be hitting the targets for this works to take place this summer. We also set aside money for generators. Generators are like chillers, they come from special places that take a long time these days. So the design documents are complete, we have the specs for our chillers. And we're working to procure those so that we can kind of get a jump on those long lead times and and get them in place as soon as possible. Mountain View, being that we expanded the building, changed some electrical panels, did some work there. We've had to do a little more work deciding how we're going to manage what goes on at the generator and size that generator appropriately. So expect those documents probably this week or next, and then we will get moving on all of the procurement for generators. Finally, Bonnie Lake High School roof repairs. We've come a long way. We talked about a roof replacement because we had a lot of problems. We've been fortunate to work with good consultants and do some really good investigation. We did some water testing to see what where water was penetrating the building. And so what you see in this drawing is an area that's outlined in red. I'm afraid to push buttons on this because last time I did that, I messed it. The area outlined in red is where we had significant water penetration, so we are going to reconstruct the roof in that area. Small area. For whatever reason, the way the water is hitting it, it's getting in, so we're going to take care of that. The areas in yellow are where we have disintegration or of the shingles. They're they're failing faster than they should. And so we're, I'm working with my consultant on a warranty claim. The warranty covers materials only and it's prorated, it's a thirty-year roof. So we'll only get a fraction of what that material cost is, but it'll be better than not getting anything. And it will also help the manufacturer to try and figure out why those shingles on that kind of a. Southwest facing roof are deteriorating faster than the other shingles. Shouldn't be doing that. So, you know, it will help them out and help us out. And I expect pricing for this work to be coming probably next week or the week after as well. And so progress seems like it is slow, but we've really made quite a bit of progress in these things, trying to take the right steps. And and do the right things to do the best for our buildings. So, any questions? No, there's a lot going on. Forget we seven are high and not, but there's a lot, yes.
Can you maybe for everybody listening out there and a little bit for me? But talking about just kind of defining the difference between commissioning and retro commissioning or recommissioning.
Sure.
Just the difference between, what does that mean?
So when you build a new building. We have a lot of systems that are very complex, and so especially in school construction, the statute requires us to do commissioning. Not a bad thing. And what commissioning does is basically you're testing those systems to confirm that all the sequences are correct. That they perform in the way that they're designed, that if a command is issued, the damper opens or closes. The, you know, the fan speed up or slow down. If it's a lighting control system, that the light level goes to the correct level, that, you know, there's there's a lot of little pieces, especially these days. So commissioning can can usually cover your HVAC, your lighting. Sometimes you might do other systems that they're particularly complex, but those are the big ones that we do. Recommissioning or retro commissioning is a really good practice in the life of a building. Because nothing is static. When you set a point in code. It's nice to think that nothing ever changes, but think about your cell phone. Every once in a while, when you're playing on your cell phone, it's supposed to go to a certain thing, it kind of does something you don't expect. Maybe it goes to goes black or wants to reboot. Think about Xfinity, I mean, it's where you're watching a show and then all of a sudden it's blue screen. It's because somewhere in that code, there's a fault, and that's what happens in our buildings. Whether it's a physical fault in the physical equipment or it's a code fault in those millions of lines of code. That control our systems, there's a fault. And that affects the air, it affects the light, maybe it affects the CO2 levels. So maybe kids get too sleepy, or maybe they get really amped up. Maybe they're just cold, maybe something, but there's physical effects from those changes. So you recommission to make sure that your buildings are functioning optionally, optimally. And so that you're identifying those problems in code or in equipment that should be repaired. To maximize life cycle and the performance of your building. Is that how? Okay, any other questions? Yeah.
Maybe you have the answer maybe. In one of those slides, you had a figure, it was fifty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-nine thousand for incentives. Two hundred sixty-eight thousand, one hundred ninety-four for implementation of what it is, yeah. So obviously, that's not the full cost. Is that twenty-five percent of the cost, thirty percent, seventy-five percent? I mean, what, I mean, how generous are these?
Oh, they are generous.
Compared to the the actual putting the stuff in. They're pretty good, huh?
They're really good. So when you see the assessment phase, that fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. That is doing your initial assessment of the work. What's the scope of work? How do we go about doing the work, identifying what you're looking for in the buildings? And these kinds of, those kinds of things. That's nearly the cost. I mean, it's like ninety something percent of the cost. The implementation phase is those issue logs and the work orders and the repair costs. And again, that is less of a percentage, but it is still a significant percentage. I would guess it's probably. Close to thirty percent. Where there's more funds and why I didn't clearly define it in the last paragraph is the performance. If we achieved every performance target, every performance target. Then the the dollars that would be coming back would put this project at least fifty percent or better paid for. Because this is funding that we got from the government, then we need to use that money to to continue the work of these projects. And I'm working with Mary to make sure we stay legal and above board with all of that. But I had no expectation that PSE would fund to this level. My experience with PSE has been that the big expensive projects are harder for them to fund. So I was very surprised at the numbers that they came back with on this project. And I think that's why they're really invested in our district and in this work as well. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you what we're doing, and I look forward to doing it again.
It's a certain level of competence a board can have when your leaders are out educating other leaders in the community, so nice work. Good luck with that. All right, next presentation is Director of Information Technology, I'll send another expert.
Doctor Amit, student members of the board, it's my privilege to talk to you about what we've been doing in the technology department last year or so. So as you know, we have a strategic plan. A strategic plan helps us to be future written. And as part of that plan, every department has signed on to the promise. That we will know value and support every student helping them graduate, ready to pursue promising future. And how we go about. Answering that promise and committing to that goal might look different for every department, but for us, a big part of that is. Being responsible stewards of public funds by focusing on responsive, effective, efficient operational practices to maximize student success. We have a really good team here in Sumner in the technology department. I'm very proud of them. Got Ben right here. But no, super proud of the team. I think I was kind of glad on them here. I think we have one of the best teams with maximizing funds in the Pacific Northwest. We really squeezed every dollar we can out of every project. We go back and ask for a better deal every single time. And we have kind of a little formula that we do with all of our vendors, squeeze the most money we can out of them, so. Taxpayers should love us, vendors maybe not quite so much, we'll just say that. So who are we in the technology department? We've got all our names up there. So who are we in the technology department? We've got all our names up there. There's full 13 full time people in the technology department. Um, some of us have been here a long time. Uh, I think the longest is 19 years. Um, six of us have been, seven of us have been here longer than six years with the majority of us being here longer than, I'm sorry, seven of us have been here longer than 13 years, a majority of us longer than. Um, with that, I just want to highlight to you, we have three half time technology interns and our summer program we're very proud of. Um, we employ 15 to 20 typically students. And that's kind of a plug to of how we've had to clear our department up. We have at least two uh, full time people that graduated, one from Sumner High School, one from Bonny Lake High School. And while they may not have been with us their whole careers, they kind of jumped and we've got them back. So we're happy to have them together with us. Um, some of our our jobs, we can't all do, right? Some of them are super technical, lots of training, years of practice to get to where we are. But some of them we can do in a fairly short manner. So that's really where we take advantage of our summer workers and our interns. We try to be very efficient, not just we party with vendors, squeeze every last dollar, but also with our employees. Uh, we do a good job. Uh, one thing that we do, no matter how long we've been there, is we like to have fun and start Christmas party from this year. We got almost everybody there. We had a couple of people that were not sick, but even uh, some alumni that used to work for the technology department 25 years ago showed up. So we'd like to stay in touch and uh, be connected. So what are we doing in technology? Well, last year we closed a bunch of work orders, answered a bunch of phone calls. We support over 25,000 physical devices, whether that's Chromebooks, which is a lot, right? We're talking 11, 12,000 Chromebooks, but man, almost everything else in the classroom is connected now. We talk about HVAC stuff, you know, capital projects, maintenance and operations. We're big partners because we're every year we're becoming more and more aligned and uh, depending on each other. So big partnerships there. Um, one thing we don't really talk about a whole bunch in technology, at least I have in the last previous presentations was our rostering and uh, supporting of all the different applications that we have, right? So every different application that we have now that runs on technology, we we definitely want to get us to the table and we bet it to make sure we can support it. So that teachers aren't having to load students into that programming annually, give them assignment passwords. That takes precious teaching time, right? So we try to do that as kids switch between classes or whatever like that. It's all done kind of on the back and by um, one of our members that um, super, super excited to have and one of those people that again, I said, we can't all do everything. Almost none of us can do that. Certainly I can't do that work. So we're so happy to have him because it's really technical. We're already talking about millions of lines of code. I walk by his monitors. I see what appears to be millions of lines of code and I have no idea what's going on. Um, some of the devices we support, just to be this up here, um, and so much more and growing, growing all the time, right? Everything is utilizing technology more and more all the time. Uh, some of the applications that I was just talking about, the thousand lines of code, there's some of the applications that we use and utilize that. We've rostered kids into, we pull them in and out. We have licenses for certain amounts of kids sometimes. And so we have to really do a good job of that. Um, and then signing on, who wants to remember a thousand different passwords, right? No, students should be able to remember one password and give them all the different systems. Equitable access to technology. We feel like we do a really good job with this. I wish someone shared a story with me, Shelby Lewis, uh, a couple of days ago. Um, some of the cool things that we do now with our ELL students, English, our language learner, learner students is we, um, the teachers are beginning to create presentations, but not just in English, right? So that students can click their Chromebooks, go through the classroom, click on um, the presentation in their native language and follow along, right? So that it's it's really, you know, it's really helped. It really helps, um, just the understanding and being able to show up. We have lots of students now from Ukraine, Russia. In fact, I believe that we have a 40% increase over the last three years, right? And we have over 600 students now. So being able to uh, interact and talk and and help them is huge. We also have devices that can translate our written text as well as obviously verbal as well. So we think we do a good job with equitable access. Again, school board policy number 2022 is what governs the technology department. So just wanted to reference that. How we're funded. We are funded a ton of different ways. And so that's another part of trying to squeeze every dollar out of what we have. We also try to go after every dollar that's available, right? So again, our tax taxpayers, uh, our public should love us because we try to really go after funds that sometimes traditionally aren't aren't tapped and used. This year, E rates and uh, ECF revenue, um, almost $2 million, which is crazy now. And so as we'll see in future slides, uh, we're going to talk a little bit about the tech levy and some of the reasons we are in the green so much is because of this, right? We have access to a a lot of different positive money we try to utilize. In fact, the student performance, we believe that um, not just the operational part of our district, everything we use again in this room, right? Uses technology. But um, so much of what the students use now in the classroom, what they have available to you with textbooks and online with their Chromebooks. And uh, we really just believe it opens up the world in new ways all the time. So who benefits from a strong technology department? Our teachers do. We're able to attract teachers sometimes because of the technology that we have. Our staff benefit. Security is a huge deal. So we're constantly trying to keep us secure. Um, not get ransomware. We want to make sure that we stay up and we can provide the services we need. Our students, our students benefit. I believe our community benefits. Um, and we just really believe that everybody, everyone benefits from a strong technology department. So what's working well? Um, again, I kind of highlighted deploying our stuff, our students in summer, we think that works really well. Um, the device we chose Chromebooks is very efficient, effective to support. We really pride ourselves researching, finding efficient ways to support our customers from getting alerts when things go wrong, right? So that we can proactively fix them before they before they cause an outage, right? So that's kind of really something we try to do is we don't want our customers to notice the things that are going wrong. If something goes wrong, we want to get rid of that. Having a common vision, again, utilizing all of our resources that we have. And really just again, being really really, really good with our dollar. We believe we've saved millions of technology level dollars so far. Some of the things we've done recently, um, again, working, worrying always about ransomware, staying protected. So having a duplicate data center up on a hill, uh, increasing our server backups, deploying one-on-one devices. We just got done over winter break, deploying 300 new HP desktops to our our teaching staff, as well as classified staff, um, new laptops for administrators. Chromebooks, all of our um, Chromebooks are now touchscreen with available stylus, right? So that's something that's unique for our district. A lot of districts use Chromebooks. Not everyone has a 360 device that's touched that has a silence available. So we're very proud of that. And then hotspots, we still have hotspots available for students and staff that need uh, internet access at home. So if there's a need, have that available. More accomplishments, uh, we've talked a little bit about the 550 plus interactive platform panels that we've deployed around the district. Um, one thing that's unique about those is a seven year warranty. That's not, that's not normal, right? So we wanted to make sure we got that in there just in case there was a a problem with it. It's a huge investment, right? So we now feel like that we're protected. So that's really great. The electric carts that go up and down has a fire warranty on them as well. Um, completed entire district technology. That sounds like haven't you done that before? And we have like, we do technology inventories all the time, but you kind of did one on steroids. If you look at pretty much every door, at least one door, right? Into a room has a district barcode on it and really what that goes back to is that efficiency. So when we walk into physically do an inventory, we can just scan the barcode as we're walking in and then puts us right into the right screen inside the room. So then you just walk around and scale. The different devices in the room, if you could be out of there. Right? So when you're standing, you know, hundreds, hundreds, maybe close to a thousand within the district, um, if you can save even 30 seconds on each room, that really translates into a lot of time. Um, branding wireless system wifi system, I can geek out about that. So you're excited about that. Access control phase one project will be completed by the end of January, uh, which is the camera intercom, I agree, building in the district. And then uh, brand new bus wifi uh, to the district at no cost. We uh, we're able to find a grant that was able to completely fund out. So as we go into the next part of this presentation, a levy, you'll see we have a lot of money and some of that is is why, right? We were able to find things that fund things that we previously had dollars set aside for. Uh, upcoming projects, always way more things to do, short term projects. I'm not going to read all those to you, but there's a lot going on. Sometimes if you just grab me like, what are you guys doing? I'll be like, uh, name a couple of things. But when I sat down and made a list, like the list is long and large and you guys stay busy. Long term projects, uh, so this short term is really within the next year. Long term would be probably a little bit more than a year out. Uh, we have some things that are going on for sure. Uh, technology levy update. So this is a portion of the technology levy. And we just have some big categories here or columns, item, the category of what we kind of call it, whether it's infrastructure, device replacement, um, the revised plan as things go along. We had a very young man, his name was right at one point years ago, talk about how, how do you plan to secure technology left, right? Technology changes so quickly, right? Well, we've had to make some adjustments. So we have a revised dollar amount last year. We did a presentation and then kind of a percentage of what we spent based off of the revised of what we spent as a spent or income for as of January 1st, 2023. Uh, next part. And then uh, really the number jumps out probably, right? It's the very bottom, right? We spent about 52% of our technology levy right now, and we're two thirds of the way through. So four years out of six. So we'll have some money left over. We're also increasing some of our projects that are important. Um, but at the end, we're going to have some money left over. We really saved a ton of money. So super proud of that. But because we are getting near the end of our technology levy, we do have to start planning for what's next, right? And as levies go, they take a long time to plan. And uh, you plan to get ahead of it and out in front of it in the future, right? So the plan here is that we're going to start planning for the next phase of what that technology levy would look like. If you remember, it could be a two or six year levy. So we're forming committees now. We'll have a bunch of different committees looking at what we did last time and what we're going to do in the future and coming up with ideas. And the idea would be that we would have um, a plan, some various proposals in front of you by June of 2023. So we've got some work to do, but we're going to do it out of some stuff in front of you soonish. So with that, any questions?
It's fun to see everything listed out, you know, just the scope of the work is kind of daunting, honestly. It's it's a lot. But it's fun to kind of treat it and kind of get a better idea of just what they do. I mean, we know you're important. You've all called it. Oh, yeah. Yeah. So thank you all. Yeah.
Technology is so far above me. When I go to that place, when I go to your guys' office to get something done, they treat me great. They fix my problems. I'm on the door and I'm a happy man.
And you don't make us feel embarrassed. Congratulations on saving the district money.
Super proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have two reports listed in um, the Army Agenda for Information Only, one, the Quarterly Traveler Records Report and the Multilingual Learner Program Report 2022, 2023. Uh, that leads us into more discussion. Any more discussion? Anyone? Anybody? All right.
Good. I thought I'd give you guys a break tonight.
All right. Well, awesome. Our next board meeting uh, is scheduled for Wednesday, February 15th. We'll be at 6:00 PM in the central office boardroom. Thank you all for joining us to see me and have a wonderful night.